Amy, I'm so used to you being right.
I know.
Heidi was right, yeah. She's named.
Yeah. That's okay. All right, we'll wait till here if there's anybody that wants to address the board. No, okay. All right, so then we, moving on to adopting the agenda, I would like to make a change to nine point four. I want to table that so then we can discuss that at the work session and then we can bring that forward in two weeks to our next time. Just so everybody can get any questions answered then, it just makes more sense for me for that.
Nine point four?
Nine point four.
And I'll just revise the timeline.
Okay. Any other changes to the agenda? All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda with that change.
So moved.
Motion by Lindsay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bobby. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Moving on to rebel recognition. Hearing from the middle school.
So Ms. Westgard, she has a little, I don't know if you may be able to see from there, Amy. Come over here. She was, you laughing because there's no signal?
Yeah. It's like, oh, you just have to move it. Oh, wait, no, it's okay. There we go. Okay.
So just to brag a little bit about Ms. Westgard, she received a very competitive fellowship with an amazing opportunity for her to expand her learning and bring back to her students. And she's going to share that with you today. I just want to stress that this is super competitive and it's amazing and I'm so proud of her for getting it, so.
Thank you. Well, I was selected by National Geographic as one of forty Grosvenor Teacher Fellows this year and it's a competitive application process that they go through looking for people who are committed to geographic education. What I'm going to do essentially is a professional development opportunity of a lifetime and they will take all forty of us and we're going on different destinations or expeditions across the planet. I will be on this ship, the Explorer, and sometimes on that Zodiac there. Hopefully we'll figure out how to get in and out of that thing. So what it's going to be is a life-changing field-based experience for myself. I will be gone June thirteenth through the twenty-ninth and you can see the map up there. Of course, I have to have maps. I'll be going into Oslo, Norway, and then once I get up to Longyearbyen, which is in this archipelago of Norway called Svalbard, I'll get on the ship and we'll go around there. is still there. With climate change, it's been, you know, hit or miss with that ice on the western side of Greenland. Then we'll go into Greenland and then we'll end up coming down around that north, northwestern part of Iceland. So what am I going to do while I'm there? I'm going to enhance my geographic knowledge with experts in the field. There'll be naturalists, there are National Geographic photographers, there are scientists, there's some underwater specialists, and on top of that, there's some paying guests. So I'm kind of not exactly a crew member, but I have to act like I am a crew member and be on my best behavior line there. We'll be investigating the human impact of, on these places that a lot of people haven't been in these pristine environments. And I think the highest north I'll be is eighty degrees north, so it's about six hundred miles from the North Pole. And what I'm hoping to do is taking these onboard experiences in my learning and bringing it back into the classroom to kind of transform my teaching and hopefully engage students and colleagues about the Arctic. National Geographic, the last couple of years, have started this geo-inquiry process. It's very similar, if you're familiar with PBL learning, project-based learning. And so what this means for the students is I'm going to come back with a new Arctic-based geo-inquiry unit and hopefully at the end, once I, hopefully I'm inspired and I get all this together, that students are going to act locally to make a change to a global issue that is present in the Arctic. Some things that I've thought about before going has to do with food and food supply. Svalbard has the Svalbard Global Seed Vault. It's where nations deposit their seeds. They call it the Doomsday Vault. So I might try to tie something with that into Minnesota agriculture. Climate change is another hot topic, along with plastics in the ocean. So I'm also going to keep myself open to, you know, just learning something that I had not known before and bringing it back in the classroom. So that's that.
Awesome. (applause). We will look forward to hearing from.
Lots of pictures.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
It's great to go to someone.
I know.
All right. You can go over here. My name's Grace Ramis and I'm a sophomore here. So about, what, a couple months ago probably, Mr. Tigerson sent a scholarship opportunity to myself and Mrs. Omen, and Mrs. Omen contacted some students about this opportunity and Grace took advantage of it. And it's pretty cool because there's only one, there's only six of them in the state of Minnesota and she's one of us, one DGF. It is the Stars of the North Chapter for Women in Aviation has six scholarships available for Minnesota. The girls have to learn about aviation, aerospace, and team building at the National Flight Academy at a week-long camp in Florida. And great students in grade seven or twelve were eligible. She applied and she received one, so pretty exciting for her. Why don't you tell them a little bit about what you've learned?
The National Flight Academy is an educational activity authorized by the United States Navy and you basically get to go on a fake ship basically, or plane, called the Ambition and it addresses different STEM learning opportunities and you get to, throughout the week, rotate through different jobs. And the disciplines include aerodynamics, propulsion, navigation, communications, flight physiology, and meteorology, along with core values such as teamwork and leadership skills. And you basically just get to meet a whole bunch of other girls that have been selected for this and you get to go down to Pensacola, Florida and spend the week there.
It's pretty amazing. I'm one of six.
So Grace, when are you doing this?
June seventeenth.
That's right, yeah.
To the twenty-third.
Yeah.
Now, is this a field of interest for you? Is this a field of interest for you? I mean, this is where you're.
I would like to go into the Air Force.
Or heard Navy, you know. My son's Navy.
And I asked her how she got interested in this and I thought it was really interesting. Tell her how you got interested in the aviation field.
In tech ed, when we had the little flight simulator.
In middle school?
Yeah.
So she's been interested in it that long?
Wonderful.
And then did you go to Fargo and something or?
Yes, the Midwest Aviation Symposium is basically a day of the year where a whole bunch of pilots or people who are interested, such as students, will go to a certain location. This year it was Delve Hotel, I believe. And there are different sections or like seminars that you can go to and you basically get to listen to professionals talk about what they're in and just their job in general. So that was pretty interesting, hear them all speak.
Pretty amazing, pretty proud of you.
Yes. (applause). We have, we have a graduate from DGF who is in the Army and flies, so I have a great contact for you if you're interested in talking to her.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, you can talk.
Thank you.
Yeah, in the next meeting, we'll have a group coming in that went to the Model E M conference last weekend and they are all, they are very excited about promoting and advocating for that program to get expanded into next year. So they, they want to talk to the board directly about that.
Oh, that's nice.
It's great.
That's nice. Roseanne Alness, where is?
And Roseanne doesn't have a report tonight. We moved hers, we bumped hers up earlier. She was on the schedule originally, but we moved that one up back in.
Two weeks ago.
Yep.
Okay, all right, then we will move on to Mr. Jacobson.
I'm not gonna lie, this is a tough act to follow after. Aviation, Grace, and Karen, just kill it. Oh, you gotta do a tech report, come on. This'll be quick, a quick overview. I really want to talk about two things tonight, really from a tech front, from an educational perspective, and then maybe one from an operations perspective. What I'm handing out is a result of a, it's an annual survey that we do every year and what admin, what the tech committee, what Mark Baria asked, is this is a company we partnered with called Bright Bites and they are in one in four schools in the nation. Kind of their niche is to do surveys and assessments of how technology is being used in schools, specifically K-12. We take the survey in December and it's done by all certified staff and students, three through twelve. And these are people that, these are statisticians, so they, they got specific questions and they really kind of look at different areas. That's from tech access to infrastructure to support to 24th century, that's really what like, you know, the four Cs are. The first page is kind of a district overview. There was like a 10,000-foot view, this is where DGF is at. We get kind of scored at a proficient level. And one thing that I like about with this company, this kind of shows us historical data, where we're at and where we've been, so you can kind of see that growth from where we started in 2013 and each year we're kind of showing growth overall across the district. If you look at the second page, I included just a couple snap, a couple example reports. This one is quality of support. This one is probably, this isn't my wheelhouse, this is something I kind of gravitate towards, but I'm really appreciative of the work the guys do. And what this question, this survey kind of shows is if teachers, students need support, how, you know, how we do. And what this is a comparison of how DGF compares with the national average. These are all K-12 schools, you know, that have, that participated in the survey, so they, they do good work and I'm appreciative of that. So that's a, that's a positive. Like anything, if you look at the last report, and again, this is just a handful of reports that this tool can have, is probably an area for growth. And what this is, is a use of access of digital textbooks, specifically digital curriculum. And you can see right now, like sixty-nine percent, you know, of staff haven't used that ever and we've got another five, you know, percent every few months. In my opinion, that's an area for growth. And I'll be the first one to say, we don't necessarily want to have digital curriculum just for the sake of the change, but I think it's fair to say we could look at, you know, different, different tools, you know, that are out there. But if you also look at the comparison, that's not unique to DGF. I mean, you got fifty-nine percent of other schools at a national level. They're kind of in the same boat that, that we're in, that we're trying to figure things out, you know. In my opinion, I think we're at a good spot at the substitution level, so staff and students are comfortable in using the devices. We use them for assessments. We use them, you know, on a handful of different research areas. But I do think our next hurdle will probably be having a more thorough look at the different, different curriculum that's out there in a digital format and, and some of that is ready, some of it's not ready. I don't think there's going to be one tool, one solution that's going to be out, you know, for everything, but it's definitely, definitely an area for growth. The other area I wanted to talk about tonight was really kind of the operations side. We have rolled out, as most, mostly already know, SAS, or not Sassy, Synergy. That's our student information system and then we did that last summer. Overall, that's gone well. One area that I think we're still working with, Region One at EduPoint, is the handshake between Synergy and School Pay, our credit card solution. So that is, that's a clunky experience in my opinion, but we're hoping to have that, hoping to have that worked on this summer. We're going to find out what they have to enhance that, that handshake between the two platforms. Our goal is to have something ready by this fall, but we're, we're at the mercy of what EduPoint can have, what they can do. Few other projects we're working on, that's probably of a more public, more public presence or more, probably more talked about, is our website. We're going to redo our website this summer. And the platform that we currently have, it's a Google platform, and that is being retired sometime next year. So we are working on building the new site. It's going to be more mobile-friendly, more ADA compliant. I've got a lot, a lot of positive feedback, good feedback from the tech committee on what we need to improve on. I've shared with the group. I'm comfortable on the functional level, but when it comes to the making it look pretty or looking at the marketing side, that's not my strength. So I'm appreciative of, of the committee's feedback on that so far. My goal is to have that cut over sometime in June or July. And then probably one other project we're working on significantly, we're doing a copier proposal. So we're going through that process right now. Our current copiers are five years old. They are, they're the vehicles that's got 300,000 miles. They're beat up, they're, they're in tough shape, so we're going through the process and, and getting new bids, new equipment, seeing what that comes in from a cost perspective, but also a reliability in what we can do to actually have scoring or some type of data that shows how our company's reliable products, so reliability on our copies is, is an ongoing challenge that we have. So with that being said, that's a fast and furious overview, but I guess I wouldn't open it up for any questions, thoughts, or concerns from you guys.
Looking forward to a new website. That'll be nice, especially with the cell phone, so that'll be good.
We're, we're gonna do lessons more, so if content isn't being updated or if it's kind of a challenge, I'm, I'm just in general, if it's a department or an office or a facility, I, it's going to be gone, you know, on it. So, and from what we've early tested, you can, I like the, we got more and more mobile users, so it just needs to, that's where, that's where everything's going. So I think it'll be definitely a positive, a positive change.
Do you look at updating as far as on the website, anything that's on there that if, if you're announcing anything, that there's an immediate link that a parent can go on and pay something right away? I know sometimes it gets really frustrating to pay for a fee and you have to search to see where that is. So let's say Tracy has something as far as driver's ed, this is being announced, whoop, there's that little link that you can do that right in there instead of searching for it? Is that something that the tech committee is looking at doing?
We can, if it comes to notifications like that, I believe we can add URLs into the notification, but those are, those are two separate tools. So it's kind of a balancing act. If we can keep that message short and sweet to, hey, you want people to, you know, come and touch X, Y, Z, my focus and my suggestion would be to keep that message as short and sweet as possible because we're drowning in emails and texts and stuff like that. And as far as, but if it's a static URL, yes, I feel confident we should be able to do that, but I'll, I'll confirm that. But as far as it goes to making a payment, that is something where parents are going to, the majority of our payments, probably eighty-five, ninety percent of them are within the synergy. They have to log in as their account. So if, if Tara and I are paying something for Alyssa, we have to log into our account. We're not going to be able to, we're not going to be able to send that specific of a URL to other masses because that, that's an individual login piece. Good questions?
Anybody have any questions?
Did you touch base on the synergy and School Play or School Pay? It's a challenge, but you're working through it.
It, you know, it's functional and I was talking to it a while back, you know, day one, it was ready, right, you know, at the start of the school year, but I'd be lying to you if I didn't have some colorful words, you know, as I'm sitting at home trying to make payments for this, through the process. So their degree of integration is different from what I kind of wanted, but that's, we're one of the first schools on the Highway Ten side to use School Pay, so we got, we got aggressive pricing on it. It needs, those two products need to talk to each other because in the past, we had them two separate and it was simple and it was good, but we got zero for reporting capacity and now that we got coaches and we got departments that can say, yep, when Alyssa used the wire trip, for example, and Tara made payments for that, Cindy, Brooke, whoever does it, needs to be manly running reports. We can have those teachers, those coaches see real-time who's paid, who hasn't, but that only works when you got those two platforms talking and it'll get better, but it's still, I think "good" is a good word for it, because you're talking to each other.
Thanks, John.
All right, thank you. All right, do we have any board committee reports?
I just, Kimberly sent me an email, March Madness forms, if anybody has those.
Turn it in.
If anybody has those, turn them in to Kimberly and that's it.
All right, so we will move on to six point four, the superintendent report.
We'll be short because we have a work session afterwards, believe it or not. Few things, like I said, next meeting we'll have a presentation by the youth in government, the kids that, the students that went to that last weekend, so that'll be coming. We received some information about the insurance rate renewal and it was, it was better than what we've been seeing, I would say statewide, but it was our, it was our highest increase for PEAP, the Public Employee Insurance Program. Overall, it was about a three point eight, three point nine percent increase, depending upon, they, what they do is, we have three different offerings. And again, it, it doesn't affect the district as much as it affects the employees more so, okay, because you have set amounts for, for majority of the employees. So we have three different offerings and when we look at those renewal rates, like I said, they, they go through and divide, they look at each group within PEAP, just, so it may vary from four point five percent down to three point some percent overall, that three eight, three nine. So that's the new rates that are coming. So info is coming on that. I don't know if Jeannie sent it out yet or not. MSEA, so those of you that are on negotiations for the non-certified, we've had a request, three potential dates, and we can talk about this more in the work session, but May first, second, or third were the dates that they requested as for a first meeting. So we've got a few, a little bit of time to look at that. So again, May first, second, or third was the request for the first meeting, any of those three dates. The budgeting process, again, tonight in the work session, I'll give you the information that came out of each of the four sites as far as the things for potential recommendations as we, as we discussed before. The next step is the IELT, the district leadership team meeting on Wednesday. A couple of days, we're going to go through those requests and get prioritization from that committee. So then we'll have those prioritizations. The admin team is sitting down and has a meeting next week, so you're going to have recommendations coming from all the levels over when we hit the twenty-third. And then it's really going to come down to which way you want to direct us to work with. Do you want, you know, to take the following, to make up that, whatever set amount that we look at for a target? And again, we'll talk about that in the work session tonight, okay? Last thing that I have that isn't going to be on the work session, we got notification on Friday that we will be able to tap into a new funding stream potentially as a school district called Achievement and Integration. We have not qualified for that previously. And the only reason we qualify now is that we have a couple neighboring districts that have been identified in isolation for that. And what that means is that they have to have a demographic group that is at least twenty percent higher than their neighboring districts. And so part of the, the concept behind the Achievement and Integration funding is that they know that there's crossover that takes place between school districts, even if the one district has a higher percentage, we know that open enrollment, what else not, some of those demographics will impact the school districts, neighboring school districts. So for instance, Pelican Rapids, Holly, some of those districts have had it because Pelican Rapids qualified. Morehead now qualifies with new calculation. Norman County West qualifies with the new calculation. So I was in contact with Missy Heidens and we are setting up a meeting to look at the impact of what type of programming. We already share resources with the American Indian Funds that we received from the state, so this is an expansion. The actual impact is potentially about ninety-three thousand dollars. It's a seventy-thirty split with aid and levy.
Is it one-time money?
It's yearly in the formula from this point forward.
Seventy-thirty?
Seventy-thirty aid, so it's, it's a good bang for the buck. So it, you know, when we, when we think about some of the things that we're already looking at expanding with AVID, it's a perfect, I had a conversation with the, the person from MDE on Friday afternoon also, some of the things we're already doing with a partnering district go hand in hand. So it's going to give us some funding to support some of the things that we're already looking to expand into the high school. So this is, this is a good thing. So it will affect, the first levy will be eighteen payable nineteen. So if it's eighteen payable nineteen, then it affects fiscal twenty. You remember all of that works? Okay, so again, we'll talk about some of this stuff more when we get into the work session, but that's a brand-new funding stream and, and again, this just came about last Friday. And if we, we do not hold the cards on that. If Morehead decides not to do it, we don't qualify ourselves, so we have to qualify through a neighboring district. But Morehead is definitely looking at, for them, it's an impact of six hundred and some thousand dollars. So there's some things we can do jointly between the two school districts, okay? That's it.
Good. All right. Thank you. We will move on to seven point one, the approval of the March twenty-sixth regular meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Amy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Raleigh. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Moving on to the consent agenda under claims and accounts.
We have, or total board bills would be approved of sixty-four thousand, three hundred and eight dollars and seventy-four cents.
All right. Also the resignation of Kelsey Sterns, paraprofessional, March twenty-eighth of this year. Resignation Ken Emerson at the end of this school year. Donation from myself, from that five hundred dollars went for ECFP. And Jason and Brett Cadwell, an amount of a hundred and fifty dollars for the lunch program. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. So moved. Motion by Lindsay and second by Scott.
Scott.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Moving on to number nine point one. This is the second reading of the following ones. Nine oh one, community ed. Nine oh four, distribution of materials. Nine oh five, advertising. Nine oh six, community notification. And nine oh seven, rewards. This is the second reading of these policies. Whoever motion?
So moved.
Motion by Amy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bobby. Any questions? Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Moving on to nine point two, the school calendar. This is the second review of the eighteen-nineteen school calendar. Any?
So moved.
Is that by Lindsay?
Yep.
And Scott. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Moving on to 9.3, the construction manager. Looking for a motion and a second to any other.
Do we want to have any discussion about Thursday night? That's what you said we were going to do, Brian, tonight, or?
Yeah, you're going to want a motion and a second, and you can open for discussion.
Yep.
Okay. I'll make a motion to enter into contract with Comstock.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion, or any other?
Yeah, the only questions I have, honestly, is that okay?
Yep. Yep. Yep.
So we kick around numbers, we, we had some preliminary stuff, and to me, I think it's important on numbers. First of all, I think we should expect perfection from each of them, and I think both of them might mean, would provide that. I truly believe that, you know? We've had experiences with both in the past, and I think they're, they've been great experiences. But, you know, when we start looking at numbers, you know, okay, there's a half a percent here, and then there's a superintendent fee here, and then there's a pre-construction fee here. Do we actually have like a solid number? Is there a superintendent fee on both? I mean, what is the actual final between the two? I mean, does that mean, you know what I'm saying?
Actually, I did talk to Gary Benson yesterday and today, and the part that was missing was a question that we asked in the meeting.
Yeah, correct.
About that, and he gave me the numbers for it. And short of either figure a 15-month or 18-month meeting, when you calculate it out, both bids are within $8,000 of each other.
What is that based on?
He based it on $875 a week for Gary, and the government rate of 54.5 cents a mile, figuring 400 miles a week.
Oh, so you're talking about the subsistence component?
Yep. Per diem, I've always called it, you know? That kind of a thing. You figure that out, and it comes right down to, well, it's within 800, $8,804 of each other. Now, that's, that's taking the, the referendum cost of $8,500 for Kraus Anderson, and having the $100 an hour cost as a wash.
Yeah, that was the other thing I had written down, too, like.
I mean, it's hard to say.
How many hours is it? I mean, is, is it 100 hours, is it 50 hours? You know, because it's, that's the hard thing, like, what is the norm for hours that a construction management?
Right, and that's where KA had a solid number.
Yeah.
And Comstock was $100 per hour, and let's, you know, however much we want to use.
Correct.
So that's, that's the difference. So we're within.
I know at that meeting, the dollars part, you know, the, that optional thing, no-dollar stuff came out, but, so those were the things that I had. You know, you got 85, I mean, $100. I guess, you know, I would consider that a wash, I would agree with you. You know, super versus super is one, super paid, both supers paid, that's what I.
Well, another big difference, there's one on the KA side, and there's one on each site for Comstock.
Okay, I think you want to be careful on something, though. Remember, the, the actual personnel, that's not included in that two and a half for those percents. That's something we calculate with either of the construction management. If you want to have two, or three, or four, or one.
But, but it is a, it is a head-to-head.
What I'm, what I'm saying is, if, no, what I'm, what I'm, what I'm saying is, either of your companies will provide, they may suggest a different amount of them, but remember, what you're going to do is another, next step, is whichever company we work with, we're going to be negotiating the rates for the personnel. So if you want to have two superintendents one each site, you're going to have a set rate. That's not in these percents.
Right.
So, you know, the thing about two, or this one's going to have one, that's up to the board. You're going to make that determination.
It is to a point, except for the per diem, the travel cost, that kind of stuff.
The per diem is the difference.
Will be an added amount.
That.
For one, and it won't be for the other.
It, it, well, assuming you, you're not going to have, if they're living right here. You're going to have travel expenses most likely unless whichever of these people is not located right here.
Right.
From whatever company.
Yep.
Okay?
Agreed.
So, I mean, that, that's something you're going to have.
So what are the roughly?
And, so that's the part that Scott is.
Is the 8,000 roughly right? I mean, I know what the superintendent going rate roughly, you know, roughly is per, you know, the number. I can pitch that out if everybody really wants. I mean, it's, you're not off at all. I mean, you're probably in the middle, Raleigh, of, it could be higher, it could be a little less.
With?
Uh, that per diem rate, is that correct?
No, it's, that's right from Gary.
You, you're talking about for these, you're talking the per diem?
Yes.
Piece of it. And, and again, a lot of that's, these, the different personnel that we're going to be hiring, that are going to be part of their teams, that we're going to be paying for, some of them are going to not be involved in the whole process because in the first place, like a site superintendent, you're not going to be having them on-site until you start working on the site. I mean, not very much before.
Well, you know, that's where, and that's where the 18 months came in, because you're figuring that we get things going in, in April, things get going, we, I'm assuming we'll wait until the ground, well, falls out here this year.
Yeah.
Could be June. You know, we're looking at, depending on how much groundwork has got to be done, May at the earliest, probably into June. So you take the summer and you go out, figuring all the way through the next year and in for a cleanup. Now, one company had it as ending the summer of 2021, and one wrapped it up October of 20.
Yeah, and, and, and those are what you're, those are going to be your estimates.
And that's, there's going to be, in my experience in the past, it's going to be, we'll see how the weather is. I mean, if we get rain seven days a week and 20 below zero, and, and where it's almost impossible to work outside, yeah, at least they can't do block, I mean, things happen. Things change, so.
Yeah, it, it's, you know, those are some of the things, you, you got to decide as a board what your, what the highest priorities are associated with these things.
Yeah.
You know, if, if you're, if you're, if you're comfortable with the idea of somebody being, you know, if, if you're comfortable with the idea of a CM also bidding on work.
Yes, and the way the bids are handled, I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
You know, that, that's something that you make a decision about. That's, that's up to you. You know, because your CM is, is the one who is going to be receiving the calls.
Yep.
So as people are going to bid on these things, who are they going to be contacting? Your CM. So that's a comfort, that's something you have to decide if you're okay with.
Right.
Having the CM also be bidding against the people that they're providing information to.
So, I'm, aren't they sealed bids? There's a. They're sealed bids, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So I'm, I'm comfortable with the process.
So there's a motion on the, on the table, and a second motion, still up for a little. I, I just want to add my two cents. I've worked with Kraus Anderson in the past, and I know their history and their longevity, and I trust them, I really do. And I, and I trust the referendum guy. I had, I, I'm not comfortable with Comstock's referendum person. I really am not. We're not making a park. We are building a school, and I like to have somebody that has history and, and knowledge on. But again, we have two great companies before us, and I think that the board, just whatever decision is made, we need to be unified on this, and it does not need to be split if all at possible. We are all in this to, I, I don't want to do a high school musical little scene, scene thing and say we're all in this together, but I just think that this needs to happen when we work together, or at all. I just wanted to say my two cents with my plug for, for Kraus Anderson, so.
Okay.
But there is a motion on the table, there's a second for Com, Comstock. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. So, motion carries, 6-0. All right, we will move on to, we tabled 9.4, so we're looking for the 10.1 is the resignation of Lisa Borboom, high school music fax teacher. That's unfortunate that she's resigning, so looking for a motion.
So moved.
By Raleigh.
Second.
And Scott. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Moving on to 11, 11.1. Right after this, we'll give a 10, 15-minute break, then we'll get going for the board meeting tonight. We will be discussing the thing that was tabled, that would be for the architects moving that forward. That would not be, we don't vote on anything at a work session, we're just getting information from that, and that would be put on the agenda for, in two weeks, moving forward with that. There's a final fiscal personnel meeting Monday, April 23rd, also here at 5:00, followed by the board meeting at 6:00. Meeting is adjourned at 6:40.